Okay. So, we have enough board members to start. Spoon is driving in, will be here soon. Emma's reminding us that we want to have, whenever someone stands up to speak, to identify yourselves for the camera. Smile pretty. And I think we'll just start by taking an approval of the minutes and the agenda and then the financial warrants. And then we'll jump right to you guys from Academy. Does that work for you, Kelly and Andy?
Yes, that sounds good.
Okay. Because they seem so enthusiastic to be here.
Oh, cool.
All right, so do we have any sort of...
Yeah, they've come in cruelly today to be here.
I love the enthusiasm. So is there anybody who would like to make a motion so we...
I will move the minutes, the warrants, the agenda.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Hi.
You're on.
We're on?
Yeah. Surprise! Is that fast enough?
No, it's faster than I was expecting.
We aim to please. It's great.
Well, you're in for a treat tonight. I'm not going to talk. So, we've got an agenda planned and I'm going to let teachers do all the talking about the kinds of things that we're doing. And included in here will be the SBAC results, which I will report those. Other than that, I'm silent. So first, we have the Antioch return program. This is Debbie Carden, which most of you know. And Debbie has a PowerPoint presentation.
All right. I guess I'm going up here.
Wherever you want to sit.
I sit here. So, yeah, we're here to share with you what we've been doing so far. I know some of you are aware of the program because I talked to you about it last year.
You might want to give some background though, just so that anybody who's watching...
That's what we're doing. I'm going to go through and give that. And is there, do you want me to be over there so I can...
No, you can use this and just hit that right arrow to go.
Right.
There you go.
There it is. All right, so a quick overview. I do want to make sure there's enough time for you to hear from the interns though and the teachers who are here to share with you. So what we're doing this year is we've got a partnership going on with Antioch. And we've got four interns placed at, well, actually three, you know, three interns placed up in different grade levels within our school. They're taking coursework at Antioch and they're here half-time as parent educators all year. So they started in late August and they're still here. And they take on all kinds of things. They are acting as parent educators, but they're really doing a lot of training. So they're working with small groups, they're working with individuals, they're doing lunch duty, they're doing recess duty. We're planning together, we're creating curriculum. So it's been a busy, engaging fall. The cooperating teachers in exchange, they do have a team that is supervising them as well as myself. Once a week, I observe them and we share and check in about feedback. But they also have a cooperating teacher team and those teachers are receiving credit for the work they're doing. And we meet monthly-ish to check in and do some PD on that and that thing. I'm the onsite supervisor. That's pretty much the gist of that, so...
And the interns are getting a degree in...
Education. Elementary education. Masters in elementary education with certification. So this is just a quick, I just want to quickly show you this visual. This is what the traditional model used to look like, a 14-week internship. The arrows are kind of illustrating the interaction between Antioch and our school or A-School and the teachers and the intern. And this is where we're at now. So we've really increased a lot of, a lot of the interaction that happens. There's a lot of feedback, a lot of supervision, a lot of collaboration. And as far as benefits go, so our students, what our students see in each grade level and you'll hear from these guys, they've got a higher ratio of teachers. So there's a lot of more opportunities for small group instruction and there's some really exciting expanded learning opportunities that are going on. The teachers have additional support in their classrooms, you'll hear about that. And I spoke about the graduate credit. The interns are really immersed in our community, they're part of our community, they're doing the professional development with us, they're, you know, moving through the personnel kind of things that happen when you're in the job. And as a district, we're really, I think, shaping our future teachers in this way. They're, they're getting a lot from us and we're getting a lot from them. Antioch is excited because this is really a gold standard for how to train teachers. There are, these guys are spending a lot of hours here. They're tutoring, they're doing extra projects, it's pretty exciting. Quick couple pictures. This is one of the interns you'll see back there. Liz is working with fifth graders and culminating project. They built bridges, studied bridges and then built models and I believe created a business card as well. And so that's pretty fun and exciting. This is our kindergarten intern, Sarah, who is creating, Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, seed ornaments?
Yeah, animal, animals. Cookies for the animals.
Cookies for the animals. Perfect. And this is stone soup in the forest, right? So I'll let you hear from our interns now. So Sarah and Lori and Liz, you guys want to come up and share some of your experiences?
Hi. Good evening. I'm Lori Farina and I just wanted to thank you for letting us be here. Very thankful and I am a student, a graduate student at Antioch and a fifth-grade intern. So I'm working with a fifth-grade team. So there are three things that I just wanted to mention. Very thankful for the opportunity to observe because there's huge power in observation. So starting off the school year, I've had an opportunity to observe systems and processes and that's not something that I think I would have gotten in the traditional internship program. The other thing is really the power of relationship. Had an opportunity to meet the students and work with the teachers and the support staff and administrators and seeing how this really great community works together. So I don't believe in a traditional internship program, I would have had that opportunity. And the other, the other thing that I'm very thankful for is an opportunity to see how I can apply the principles of integrated learning from Antioch to see how I can apply them in a public school system. So I'm really thankful for that opportunity, so thank you.
I'm Sarah Gamble. I'm interning with the kindergarten team in two of the kindergarten classes as well as with Whitney, who is the special educator for kindergarten, some chopping points. This fall, I've been working primarily with Maureen Parsick. And so I started, as Lori was talking about, observing and then moved into taking over progressively more days of the week. So one week I would teach on Monday and then the following week I taught Monday, Tuesday and the following week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So last week I just did a solo week teaching every morning of the week. And that's when I did the, we made the bird cookies. So we were studying the gingerbread man and animals don't actually eat gingerbread, so we made them some cookies that they could eat. So another big component that I've been doing is the forest time that the kindergarten classes enjoy twice a week. So I come from an environmental education background, so that was a really comfortable place for me to jump right in. And it's, it's just so much fun being out there and playing in the woods with the kids and seeing their learning happen in the woods. So this is echoing a lot of what Lori was saying and a lot of what Debbie already said, but I'm really enjoying being part of this school community. I'm able to see how different, different people have their different roles and what my role can be. I attend grade-level team meetings, which really helps me feel like I have a voice in that team and I'm part of it and I'm contributing to the kindergarten teams. I also have the opportunity to see a full year unfold. Something that I think is really daunting going into being a teacher is how do you start a year and how do you end a year? And so being able to see that in the same classroom and with the same children gives me a really full picture of what that looks like, rather than starting in January in one class and then doing the fall in another class the following year is a little, it's a little backwards to me. So it's really nice to be able to have that complete picture. Also Debbie is crucial, having that connection from Antioch here at school. She's able to observe what we're doing and advocate for us both at Antioch and here and help us make those connections. And also help us to apply what we're doing in classes at Antioch to what we're doing here at Academy. And that connection, being able to immediately apply what we're doing in class at Antioch to what we're working on at Academy is, is an amazing experiential learning opportunity. Finally, the fact that, it really feels like there's no gaps in communication. As I mentioned, I've been working mostly with Maureen and next semester I'm going to start working more with Alan Nam. And they, because I know each other and they work with each other and I'm here and I know all of them, we can all communicate about what I am interested in doing, what I still need to work on and also ways that I can contribute more to their classrooms. So it's a nice, complete picture of communication. Thank you.
And then we also wanted you to, do you want to...
Sure. I'm Liz. I am getting dual certified in general ed and special ed, so this is actually a special education internship for me. I'm working in fifth grade with Katie Hansen and I also work in the general classroom with those teachers. So I'm doing a lot of small group work, just working to make the curriculum accessible to the kids that I'm working with who are primarily in special ed. And as you saw the bridge pictures, just trying to make things engaging and hands-on for those kids. They covered the rest.
And then we have some teachers to quickly share their experiences.
You guys can tear with me twice today. So I am teen BLC, I teach third grade here and I work with both Liz and Lori in fifth grade, which has been awesome because like Sarah alluded to, or actually said, the, it's really hard to start your first year of teaching having never seen the beginning of the school year. It's like the hardest time of year, there are so many systems to put in place and it's been really nice having them here so that they can see all of that, so that when they start their first year of teaching, it's going to feel more like they're ready to hit the ground running, I think, in a much better, they're going to be much better prepared than traditionally. In terms of what, I'm, I'm getting a lot out of it, which is great. So I have a pretty high needs class in terms of what they need for interventions. And so Liz is able to run a small book group with some kids and really target skills with them. She did the, those are my students with the bridges, it was highly engaging, the kids loved it. It's great because they really bring a lot of creativity that is something that can be hard to work into daily classroom, like all the time. So it's nice to have this like fresh energy in there, so that's been really great. Lori has been doing some really great targeted interventions that she has been working on with Debbie, who's an expert in literacy interventions. And so it's just been really, really good for my students because they're really getting a lot of really specialized targeted instruction. So I have, I've loved it. I think it's been really great.
Teen, have you seen a difference with the kids and the results? Do you feel like they're progressing faster?
Yeah, I think that they're like, one of my, one of my students in particular has been, she's, she's a special ed student, she's been, her comprehension has been well below grade level for years, like looking back at her file. And she has just been like hitting it out of the park. She's doing so well, I feel like she's comprehending right now and all the things, the work that I've done with her recently, she's pretty close to comprehension at more, at pretty close to a fifth-grade level, which has been like awesome to see. I've called her mom, her mom's super happy. It's been, it's been really great, yeah.
I'm Ellen Nam and I teach kindergarten. Sarah's been working in my classroom. And I mean, I'm happy to be doing this because I feel like someone did it for me over 20 years ago, so I'm happy to do it for someone else. And of course, when you're with five-year-olds, it's great to have another person around to help. And I would say exactly what Sarah had said, that I did a January internship and I remember thinking, how did they teach everything before this point? You know, like they had missed that. So I think having the whole year is such an advantage. And I also think the way we're doing it with Sarah and they're doing in fifth grade, by having different teachers, it's really a great experience because Sarah might see the same lesson and maybe have the same objectives, but two different teachers doing it. Or she, or she could maybe do it in one classroom and think, oh, I'd like to, you know, adapt it a little bit this time and do it again in my classroom. So I think there's a lot of advantages of being here for the whole year. So it's been a great benefit to our classrooms and I think for them too. Thank you.
Do we have any plans for next year?
So, we do. So we want to continue and again, I want to point out that this is a cost neutral, we're doing this cost neutral, so it's not costing the district any additional money. We want to continue with four slots and we're in discussions with Lyle at Central Office about expanding it to, to other schools in the SU. And we think it's a, we think it's a great model and we think that the district as a whole would benefit significantly. So we're looking at ways to expand it. I think Antioch, Debbie talked about this, Antioch would love to expand it, they're, they love that idea, so.
Debbie, are you here all day?
I'm here, so I'm four days a week. And then the fifth day, I'm here the fifth day, but I'm on Antioch's. I'm here for them on the fifth day.
So you're not working with them on the other four days?
On the other four days, I'm like...
Are you working here this year?
I am an AST, third-grade AST position. So I do intervention and I've got those four days with kids, but yeah.
Thanks.
Sorry.
I didn't know where that support was coming from.
Right. Yes, I'm 80%.
So I want to, first of all, thank you for supporting this. We spoke to you a little bit more than a year ago about, about the idea and the concept and as a board, it was really great to have your full support. And it's really helped us to get this, operating this here. And it's, it's just a great program and it's, it's just a great way to, to bring teachers into, into the field. So I know we're on a time schedule, I want to keep moving, so next up, we have teacher leaders.
I'm Tess Peterson, I teach fifth grade here at Academy.
And I'm Lurie Ravi, I teach first grade.
And I am Winnie Line, I'm a special educator, primarily working in kindergarten and first grade. We are the teacher leaders. This is our second year working together. The first thing we want to talk about is just what, what that role looks like at Academy for us. We identified three main components. The first being to look at our, our school and our students globally, socially, emotionally and academically. What are their needs and what, what do we need to better, to do to better support them? The second thing that we try to do as a team is really create and foster an environment of enthusiasm and motivation and make this a really great place that people love to come to every day. One example of that is we have a little shout-out box that, I mean, anyone's welcome to throw in a little compliment or a note of appreciation into. It's in our faculty lounge and then we share those at our faculty meetings and also send them out in Academy news. So that's just a fun way to, to recognize all the great work that we all do every day. And then the third component of what we do is really providing, excuse me, sorry, opportunities for collaboration both within grade levels and across grade levels and disciplines and planning professional development for our Tuesday staff meeting. So the bulk of, you know, what we think about when we get together and, and plan is, you know, what do our kids need, what do our teachers need and what do we need to do to, you know, provide that during that, that gift of time that we have on Tuesdays to be as productive as we possibly can be.
And so when we're thinking, big picture for the year, we always try and keep in mind like what are the needs that we're really seeing in our class or in our school? And what's becoming increasingly more obvious is that our students are dealing with some pretty intense things in their home life and outside of school that is adversely affecting their learning. And the emotional toll it's taking on us as, as their teachers is concerning. And so Teen had actually come across an article last year that, as she was reading it, she was like, this is exactly what our students are dealing with. And it really had to do with trauma-sensitive teaching and, and how do we create learners who are resilient when they're dealing with these adverse conditions? And so because this was something that we hadn't put a lot of brainpower on, we started to look for resources as a team. And this was a resource we had come across. And there was actually an online course that was offered around this resource that the fifth-grade team took over the summer to kind of pilot and see like, is this a direction we could go? Is this a good resource to use? And we really felt like the book was a great springboard. So together as a team, we took the book and started to look at, okay, how can we use this to start to create a better environment for those students who had trauma consistently in their lives? And how can we create this environment that's going to support our staff as well as support our learners? And a majority of our teaching staff is actually taking the course for credit as well as the work that we're doing in our, in our staff meetings around it. And we, we do have a short little video we'd like to show you and just, just why we think this is so valuable, to spend the whole first half of our year looking at how can we better support these students and create more resilient learners around us.
What does your parents divorce have to do with your risk for heart disease? If your mother had a drinking problem when you were growing up, are you more likely to suffer from depression as an adult? Here's what you should know about ACEs. ACEs stand for adverse childhood experiences, extremely stressful events that can happen to a child growing up. Some experiences are so stressful that they can alter brain development as well as the immune system, increasing the risk of lifelong health and social problems in adulthood. The term comes from the adverse childhood experiences study, landmark research that shed new light on the root cause of everything from stroke and liver disease to substance abuse and mental illness. In the late 1990s, an epidemiologist from the Centers for Disease Control and a preventive medicine doctor at Kaiser Permanente set out to understand the association between childhood experience and lifelong health. They asked over 17,000 people in the Kaiser Health Plan in San Diego about their health history, as well as difficult questions about their experiences growing up. Anna and Feliby tallied up 10 different kinds of adversity in this largely middle-class and college-educated population. They were stunned to see how common ACEs were. 21% of all respondents were sexually abused as children. 19% grew up with someone who suffered mental illness. 28% had been physically abused. And two out of three respondents had experienced at least one ACE. The researchers next looked at how someone's ACE score, or the number of adversities they experienced, related to a wide array of serious health and social problems. They saw that the more ACEs someone had, the greater their risk for poor outcomes compared with someone with no ACEs. Someone with an ACE score of four had twice the risk of heart disease and cancer. Someone with an ACE score of five had an eight times greater chance of being an alcoholic. And those with an ACE score of six or more, on average, died 20 years earlier. With every major problem they looked at in the ACE study, the risk went up for each additional adverse experience in childhood. As Dr. Robert Anda says, "What's predictable is preventable." It's important to remember that ACEs are not destiny. ACEs are a tool for understanding the health of a population as a whole. For individuals, an ACE score can be a tool for understanding their own risk for health and social problems and empower them to make changes for themselves and their children. ACEs tend to get passed down from generation to generation and are common across all income levels, races and cultures. But increasingly, people of all different professions and backgrounds are coming together to discuss how ACEs affect their communities. They're finding new ways to treat and prevent ACEs. Many doctors are starting to screen their patients for ACEs as part of their medical history. More schools are becoming trauma-informed, considering the source of problem behavior when disciplining their students instead of immediately suspending or expelling them. To learn more about interrupting the cycle of adversity and improving health and well-being for the next generation, please visit kpjrfilms.com.
Basically, in, in short, we, we can't control what happens to our students when they leave school, but we can control how we support them in school, how we empower them in school and how we support each other to best support them. And so that's what our focus has been for, for this year.
So the next thing we're going to do is kind of look at those, those three components that we identified as our role of teacher leaders. This is the first one. And look at how we've been addressing each of those components through our work so far this school year. This, that we have developed just a couple of goals that we've been working on really since the beginning of the school year in order to create a more trauma-sensitive and trauma-aware environment for our kids. And the first one is just building that language. Something that we've noticed is that our kindergartners are coming in with significantly lower language abilities and really limited vocabulary. And so if we want them to, you know, be able to label their feelings and, and tell us what's going on with them, we have to directly and explicitly teach that. And so part of that is just giving them language to describe how they're feeling. And then the second piece is also using consistent strategies. We want to develop as teachers, a set of strategies that we can all, you know, K6, that we can all use and, and rely on to help kids get out of that space when they get there so that they can access their learning every day. And so those have been our, our two main goals since the beginning of the year. And we've done quite a bit of work with that. And just to explain those terms of downstairs brain and upstairs brain, those were new to me. So if they're new to you, here's a little graphic to explain it a little bit better. And the way that we are planning on teaching it to kids is that you really, you need your downstairs brain and you need your upstairs brain. Your downstairs brain is more for feeling, kind of your reaction. If you're in a situation of danger, you need to be able to use those skills to get yourself out of that situation. But you also need your upstairs brain, which is your thinking and reasoning brain. And you really need them to be able to talk to one another in order to solve problems and make good decisions for yourself. So that's a really abbreviated way of how we would describe that to kids.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about what we try to provide teachers with on Tuesdays. We know as educators, the importance of working in a community that you feel like you can trust and is safe and having connectedness to those, to your colleagues and having purpose and ownership over the work that you're doing. And ultimately, as educators, that's what impacts our practice and our students' learning. So as teacher leaders, we think about how can we support our staff, how can we build relationships, not only within our grade level, but also vertically within the building. And it's pretty remarkable that Academy, we have, you know, we have our counselors present, we have special educators, support staff, behavior support. And when we come together, it's an incredible amount of resources in the room. So we try to really build staff's capacity to see the resources and work in a positive way. So we usually begin the school year with recognizing strengths among us and knowing that... that we aren't all going to have the same strength, but we can find it in the room. So we do that through, done personality stuff. Last year, we did something called Academy TED Talks. So people got to get up and share successes in the classroom and resources. And that had a pretty positive outcome among our staff. And we also know that it's the questions that we ask that are equally as important as, you know, that's like the biggest step to our action within the classroom. So we try to provide staff with opportunities to reflect together, you know, feel good together, and free up creative solutions to figuring out some of the stuff that we're going through. It's been pretty fun.
And last but not least is that collaboration piece. And so one of the important things that we felt like we really wanted to problem solve was how do we support each other when the things that are happening in our classroom, other staff members aren't there to be part of and witness and, you know, have information about? So one of the things we tried this year was each staff member tracked a student that they had concerns about and didn't feel like they were quite connecting with or hadn't quite figured out yet how to best support that student. And then they came into a staff meeting with some information. And that's what the tracking sheet looked like. So they were looking at what was the behavior, what happened right before it, what categories it might have fallen to. And then we were able to meet in small groups to look at these individual students and look at what was happening with these individual students and what were the behaviors that we are seeing and how could we support them? And because we had this concrete focus and some actual information to share with our coworkers, we were able to really come up with some ideas to try. And it helps you to feel like you're not so much an island, right? You have a team that's there that's going to help you figure, figure out how to best reach a student that you might have been struggling with. And another thing that we have spent some time collaborating on is how we want to empower our students with that language and strategies. And so we had some planning time in small groups again where we came up with different ideas and lessons that we could do with our students to get them comfortable talking about the feelings that they're experiencing when they feel themselves slide into their downstairs brain. And one of the groups even came up with a really awesome video that we could use with kids, which has inspired other groups to want to create videos and resources and things like that as well. So we plan on spending some more time creating those resources together. And, you know, anytime you can put more brains on something, you're going to create stronger things. So it's been really exciting to see what we're able to create together. And the consistency of being able to do it together creates a stronger community.
Can I just put something in?
Sure.
I can't sit in a meeting and not talk, but I'm Jane Schultz. I just, as a teacher, this is some of the most profound professional development I've ever done. I can't believe how much this helps me in the classroom, not only with my children, but with myself. The stress level is like so much less when I'm dealing with a child who is what we call flip their lid. They're going into that downstairs brain. But this particular form, when I collected data on the child that I collected on, I literally could pinpoint when she was going to have a problem. And by doing that, it goes back to that video where it talks about prevention being the way that you can stop, if you can, if you know what's going to happen, if you can predict it, you can prevent it. It is made like amazing. Now I do this data collection all the time. Just if you can pinpoint where it's going to happen, it's really powerful of how you're going to help the child and how you're going to help yourself because you're already going to know how you're going to deal with it. So I can't thank these guys enough who are fabulous, by the way, teacher leaders, for this professional development. It's been phenomenal. Thanks.
Yeah, the more proactive we can be, the better for our students and for us.
I think that's all we have.
It's a question that I have a lot of times as a parent, because I think what you're saying, Jane, is true as a parent as well. Do you share some of this information back with the families?
I mean, I think we, I mean, we've just started this ourselves. And so I think that would be a good direction to take it. But, you know, I think we're still, we are still in the process of finishing the book and because we've had some requests to do some additional videos and additional work, I think we might continue it into January a little bit, but that.
Yeah, I think that organically comes into parent conferences too. Maybe it's teacher dependent, but that definitely, you know, the successes with children in the classroom and the areas that teachers are working with kids, that would be part of parent conference.
And I think when you start to see those patterns, that you often do reach out to the family and say, "Do you notice this too?" And when this child gets into this sort of a situation where is facing this sort of a struggle. So I think definitely family input is huge when we're looking at.
Thank you. So I think that will give you a little bit of insight into the kind of amazing work that our teacher leaders are doing. And so much of it is professional development. And we, I think, like all of our schools now in ESU and Brennerboro in ESU, use our faculty meeting time, which is Tuesday afternoons for about an hour, to do professional development. So it's homegrown professional development that's based on the needs of our school, needs of our students. So next on the, the next is S-Back results. So this is the third year of S-Back. The first year was, the scores weren't used by the state to hold us accountable. So it was sort of the benchmark year or the first year that we went from pencil paper tests to electronic computerized testing and so forth. So we basically have two years of data, 2015-16 school year and a 2016-17 school year. So I will give you, these are our latest results. This is, these are from last school year. Now, we tested all students in grades at this school, three, four, five, and six in literacy and math. And that's true throughout the United States. Students in three, four, five, six, three through eight actually get tested literacy and math. So we did, we tested our students last spring. And you can see on the left are our literacy results by grade. And on the right, math.
What's the state level, Andy, so we have some?
Well, it's a good question. Do you have that with you, Alex? I didn't, did not bring that. So this is by grade, state gives you the level for all students, or schools and all students in grades.
So the state only has it as a three through eight put together. So the statewide, third through eighth is 54% in literacy and third through eight, 44% in math. But it's not broken out by grade level.
So the state does, the state gives us, the state gives us very little now. We have to do most of the legwork in terms of getting the data. So they've really eliminated the amount of reporting they do on it. So we have to do digging to put the stuff together. But we are, as you can see, as a school where if you were to do a composite of those, we're, you know, we're around the state average, perhaps slightly above when you do an aggregate. So that's the 16-17, so we go back one year to 2015-16, you will see that, as a comparison, 15-16 is on the left, if you can look at literacy. You'll see a drop. We went third grade from 57 to 27, grades four, five, and six, all at 71% in literacy. And you'll see a drop as well when you go to the right side of the page and look at math.
Do you have an explanation?
Well, I got a lot of explanations. So, and the groups that will follow me in a moment will talk about, so we look at this data and we say, okay, what are the variables? Why, why are we trending in the wrong direction? What's going on? And more importantly, what are we going to do about it? So, and we have three groups that report, our school support team, which meets weekly before school, 7:30 to 8:10 every Thursday morning. And we broke into three subgroups on how we're going to address, you know, address our students' achievement. And they'll report, and there'll be different things they'll present, but one thing that they won't present, and I'll just share that with you now. So, because I'm very curious about this, there's a lot of variables, a lot of factors. And one of them is turnover. Sometimes we talk about turnover in staff so that, for example, if we have, we do significant amount of training for staff. We do, we do so many things that students or teachers don't learn when they're students, if they're going to a teacher's college. They don't get as part of their program. So we bring people on board, there's a gap from what's going on in colleges to what we're actually doing in our school. So that's a significant gap that we have to find ways to make up. So when you have a lot of turnover, you're going to, you know, there's a need to address that and it takes time. But what I found to be more amazing is our student turnover. I'll just give you an illustration. So turn back the clock, it's June 15th, 2015, I'm sorry, 2016. The 2015-16 school year is ending. June 15th, we had 347 students in our school the last day of school on June 15th, 2016. Over the course of the summer of that 347, 29 students left. They moved away. And I'm not talking about the kids who graduated, went off the bands in sixth grade, but 29 students in those other grades that moved away. That's 8.4%. Then from June 15th until the first day of the 2016-17 school year, August 30th, we lost 24 more students. Okay, so from the day we closed the doors in June, I'm sorry, we enrolled 24 new students on August 30th, by August 30th. So that's a change of 53 students, 53, a change of 53 students from June 15th till August 30th. So we start the 16-17 school year, and during the year, 23 additional students leave, and during the year, 22 students come in. So that's a total change in one calendar year or one school year of 98 students out of a school of 347. So about 30% of our students changed in a calendar year. That's significant. It's huge. Because we know, and through our data, that the longer, this is true especially for students who are below grade level, the longer they're in our school, the better they'll do. The longer they're in our school, the better chance we have of closing the achievement gap. So when kids come in, in third grade, or fourth grade, or fifth grade, who are behind, we have, we have less and less of a chance to actually close that gap and catch them up. So that's huge. And I knew it was, it was a great, it was an increasing number, the change. When I put this together, I was shocked to see just how large it is.
Did you go back and compare it to other years? Is that a difference?
I didn't. I know several years ago, I was keeping track of this and it was significantly less. And I thought it was large then. But it's, it's a huge, huge number. And not only does it, not only does it impact our academic achievement of students and the interventions we give and so forth, but it changes the dynamic of a classroom when you have kids coming and going constantly in every school and also of a community, of our community as a whole. We have significant numbers of people who are coming and going. And if you're, if you're in a community for a short amount of time, you're less invested or less vested in that community.
Andy, it seems like all of those things, all those reasons that you're giving can be tested by having on the students' tests, how many years they have been in the system and who their teachers are. And so actually, after you get your results, you can sort it out. And it should be pretty obvious if those assumptions are true or not. But I, I think, what do you think would happen if, and I don't know, when they take these tests, can they have their computers in front of them?
It's all on computer.
It's all on computer. Because I actually have a pretty good hunch that these scores go down in relation to the amount of time and use that kids spend on computers because the knowledge that they are called on to repeat or recite or find, they can just look for rather than have anything in their heads. So they, they not only keep less and less in their heads, and because of that, it becomes more and more difficult to raise them to levels that they can think, as we say, critical thinking, because they don't have that in their heads and they can't make the associations.
So that, I think you're talking more about, about the impact of technology on learning. And I guess the focus here at the moment is, for me anyway, is the, the impact of transancy, that I suspect transancy has on, on our students and on our school-wide results.
Can you add a measure of that?
Yes.
I just want to be clear, Spoon, that when they're taking the S-Back test, it's on a secure browser, so they don't have access to the internet at that time. They can't open up Google and search for the answers.
So the next thing to do is to allow them to take the same test with all the access to the internet that they need and see if those scores are true.
Sorry.
What, I know there's been, you know, the vast change in the population. What in terms of the student ratios are we getting, are there more kids leaving that are, you're hiring, you know, you're overachievers and you're getting more with, that need to have the special help and more, you know, students with special ed needs and things like that? Is that possibly affecting?
Well, our, that's a hard question because you categorize kids in a couple of ways that present a bit of a challenge. I think as a community, it's safe to say that our levels of poverty in our schools and our community has increased significantly over the last several years. Our households that are, there's an increase in the number of households that were suffering from food insecurity. We have significant increases in homelessness. We have increases in the amount of families where at least one adult is incarcerated. We have significant increase in the number of families where at least one adult is suffering from mental, mental health issues. We have significant dramatic increases in the number of families where a parent or perhaps two are, have a substance abuse issue. Number of kids in foster homes and so on and so forth.
Do we track all of that? Like I remember from DEP that that is part of the incoming information that comes in with the students into EES because that's part of the guideline. But we don't actually, and that's all basically stuff you kind of know, but we don't, we don't have a way to track that.
Well, correct. We, I mean, some things get recorded if we file, if we notify DCF, because we suspect suspect child abuse. We keep records of that. But a lot of those things, no, we don't, we don't keep records, parents aren't obligated to report that, mental health issues, or the fact they've been incarcerated, those things are still family, those are private. But we know as a community, that, you know, and we know from, if you, if you look at the data sources, or the folks who keep track of those data sources, there's a significant increase in all of, in our community.
I think an important point Andy made was that, depending on the shape of the students moving in and out, the students, regardless of their background, whether it's trauma or something else, if they're at the school for seven years, the likelihood of their percentages to be at a proficient, or above proficient level is far greater than students who are going in and out of communities.
Andy, you, you start out by saying, what are we going to do about it? And since there's so many problems with these numbers, the value of the numbers, from the transitory nature of the kids, or the inability to work with the keyboard, you know, with the technology, and what, I mean, how much value should we put into trying to make some impact on your, compared, and I'm, I'm looking at it in terms of, or comparing it to what we just heard about your professional development, Teacher Leader Program. How much time and resources and this professional time should we put into this?
Into what?
Into, into trying to raise these scores, as opposed to doing the work that you're doing in your classrooms, and see how it affects the scores, instead of trying to spend any time focusing on this?
Well, I mean, our goal is, is not to raise the scores per se, our goal, you know, we are an educational institution, our number one goal is to educate our children. And so we take that very seriously. And all these other things that we do support that, because we're the, you know, we're the guardians at light, and we're the, we're the people who are entrusted with the care of students for six and a half hours a day. So, the scores, the scores are indications to us, it's one, it's one snapshot of, of how our kids are doing academically. It's not, it's not a, it's just one snapshot. So, it doesn't measure how kind a student is, it doesn't measure how intelligent a student is, it doesn't measure the character of a student, it just, it just is a snapshot that tells us, gives us an indication of where a student is relative to some standards, relative to standards that are, that we teach at a given point in time. So it's, it's useful information, it's important information, it supports what we do, but it's not, it's not what we do.
I would say one of the useful ways of using this data is looking at trends, and that's what we do at Central Office. And so we've noticed, actually, over the last couple of years, fourth grade math scores are pretty low, not, not at any one school, in all schools. So that leads us to start thinking about, is there a match between our curriculum and the test? Is there something inherently wrong with the test? You know, is it something wrong with how we're teaching at fourth grade, or at third grade, or leading into fourth grade? So, those are the questions that we can start asking when we can see a few years of data in a row.
And I can see, continue to do that, and supporting that. What I'm, what I'm reacting to, and I hope it'll take some time in the future agenda to talk about how valuable this is, but what I'm thinking, what I'm looking at is the amount of time we just spent talking about this, and the amount of time that we spent getting the information about these two, the intern program and the teacher leader program. And this, the value, we spent more time, we spent more time talking about the scores and getting that information than getting this information, which is so much more valuable, not to the kids, but to us, to understand what's going on, so we can communicate that with the community. And I'd really just like to not hear about S-Backs again.
That's a good segue.
To your point, we're going to go to the school support team, and we have, one of the groups is curriculum. Our goal is student achievement. This is, this is one measure on where our kids are at. This group's going to talk about curriculum.
So, I'll just introduce myself. I'm Deb Haug, and I'm an academic support person for the third grade team, as well as kindergarten team. My colleague Whitney, we've already met, I'm back. And we're going to talk to you about curriculum, is it?
Yep, got it.
Curriculum consistency and transfer. I'm going to start by talking about transfer. We're going to talk about what this is, why it's important, and how we're going to move forward with it. So, looking at just transfer, we're referring to a couple of things with transfer. One is the transfer that takes place when a student moves from direct instruction, it's often done in whole class or small group with a teacher, to small group or partner work with each other, and then to independent work. So that's one form of transfer, and then, and the idea of getting to independent work is, is where they own and apply the skills that they've been learning. The other idea of transfer is when they move from one grade to another, and they bring their skills with them, they transfer over time. And so it's a retention of those skills.
So when we're talking about curriculum consistency, hopefully this isn't like visually, I know there's a lot up there. The idea is that, and I don't know how, what is the?
Point of the, it's a good speaker.
I think she's trying to get the laser pointer.
So, basically, we, we broke these, we used our MTSS triangle, which hopefully you're probably all familiar with, what we give to all kids, what we give to some, what we give to a few, and tried to line up our curriculum to match that. And so one of the things that we're doing right now, this is our second year of implementing the Eureka Math program, kindergarten through sixth grade, some grade levels have been using it for longer than that. But that's one way that we have increased our consistency, especially in math. That was an area of weakness which we, you know, were addressing, but it is, it's certainly a shift. It's a very rigorous curriculum, and it was actually written to, for the purpose of meeting the Common Core standards, that's why it was written. And there are some, there are some great benefits in that it addresses fluency in a much more intentional way than our previous curriculum had, and it also has a greater emphasis on math dialogue and talking about math, and thinking about why do things work, rather than just understanding, or than just using an algorithm. And so that's something that we have implemented, and that's one way that we have, something that we've done to, to increase our consistency.
I'm going to talk to you a little bit about some of the literacy pieces, starting with Foundations. That's a word study program that we do K to 3. It's a, it's a program that involves both phonics and spelling. There's an emphasis more on the spelling part of it. So kids are actually learning decoding skills as well as encoding skills. When you move up the grades, in fourth grade, Spelography is the program that is primarily used, and then in fifth and sixth, there's more of a focus on morphology, which is the meaning of smaller chunks of words, like Greek and Latin roots, prefixes and suffixes. And in those upper grades, but I could say even in, younger than, than fifth and sixth, is learning to use technology to spell, okay? Because we, it's easy access. Okay. Moving over to keys to literacy, in the middle. So our reading and writing programs are eclectic, meaning that we pull from a lot of, a lot of things, a lot of good material. But one of the consistencies within those programs is keys to literacy. And we've had some really wonderful in-service programming, whole staff, starting with comprehension, and then vocabulary, and then writing. This year, we circled back to comprehension to do a really nice review of it, and we pulled our paraeducators into it, which is wonderful, because they're instructional with us. Let's see. Oh, I want to, I want to say a couple more things about the reading/writing, is we focus on both fiction and nonfiction, everything, we try to align everything with the Common Core standards. And in fifth and sixth, they're using more of the Engage New York material, which is really, as you were saying, with math, it's a rigorous programming, and it's using really good literature with kids.
Okay. So then if you look at, you know, some of our specific Tier 3 type programs that we use as special educator, one of them would be the Wilson Reading System, which is, has a long recruitment track record of helping students that have dyslexia, and also the Lindenmuller Phony Sequencing, many of us are trained in that as well, which helps students with phonological awareness processing differences. So, you know, depending on where a student falls in this triangle, we have, you know, a variety of different supports in place to help them move.
So if you look at Equipped for Reading Success, Brian Bitner, our literacy coach, has been running study groups around this material, and David Kilpatrick is the author of this material. And it's become a very significant piece in, in the research around helping students to become successful readers. So, big terminology, orthographic mapping, you don't need to really know that. But the idea is that, you know, if our bigger goal is reading comprehension, to help kids understand what they're reading, for both their enjoyment, as well as to learn from their reading, we need to look at word-level reading, and making that automatic. It's not automatic for all kids. And so what we, what research has shown us is that, to become automatic, kids need to have something called advanced phonemic awareness skills, and it's working with the sounds of spoken language. So, it's been pretty exciting, all the, a lot of us working on that and integrating it, you know, into what we already do. Oh, yeah, just one of, for Tier 2, with K to 3, we're working on, with a lot of decodable text, and it's matched with our Foundations program. So that's been a really nice process for us this year to make that happen. Okay. So, why is curriculum consistency and transfer important? Well, we've kind of talked about pieces of that, but allowing for the gradual release of responsibility, where you're moving kids from direct instruction to becoming independent with their skills, developing a common language, and that common language is really critical for both kids and teachers. If you've got that, it's much, there's, there's a better flow of understanding, you know, for kids as they're developing their skills. And that goes across grades, you know, from, moving from one grade to the next. Teachers know what kids have been working on previous to getting those kids, and then, you know, they can work and build on those skills in that current year. So, moving forward, a survey went out, and teachers responded to the survey to look at their time spent on core instruction in both literacy and math. Our goals are to develop a consistency in our literacy block. Research shows that 90 minutes of uninterrupted instruction time is, is really important for developing successful readers. We will continue using keys to literacy and all of the understandings that we gleaned from that. And then the typing program, I mean, this is, we're looking at different typing programs because we know that typing is going to be an important skill for kids, right?
And as far as next steps with math, we're really excited. Judy Maynard came a couple of years ago and did an MTSS survey with us as a school support team, and that was a really meaningful and wonderful process. And we've been hearing about some great things she's been doing at Green Street, and so we're really excited to have her come this next school year and do some work around Eureka with us, to help us better meet the needs of our students in math. Because really, when you look at the Eureka Math curriculum, there, there are too many lessons to actually teach in a school year, it doesn't actually work. And so we need a really consistent way to streamline that process, and also develop some stronger Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions. We have those in place pretty solidly in literacy, and so we need to continue to work on that in math. Great, that's us.
Thank you, so. Next group is student motivation.
I'm not student motivation.
That's me, Judy.
I was, years ago.
I was a student every day. I think she was every day.
All right, so I'm Kelly Dias, Assistant Principal, Chief Primary School Counselor. And you've sort of heard by now where our students are coming from each morning when they come to school, and you've heard about the academics that we're trying to ask them to do each day, and a big part of closing that gap between those two things is motivating them. So how do we motivate students right when they get off the bus, or they get dropped off in the morning, all throughout the day? A theme of our school last year and this year has been the power of yet. There's a big difference between not knowing, or I can't, and I don't know, yet, I'm not sure how to do it yet. And Andy works that in at All School Sing, weekly, monthly, and it's culminated each year at our county fair day in May, when he does something new to him that he's worked all year to learn how to do. Last year, he flew a plane over our school. So he really has been the role model for so many kids, and I know that he's been approached in the community by kids outside of school saying, hey, Mr. Pichuli, I didn't do this yet, but I'm working on it. So it's really spreading, and we're trying to put a lot of emphasis on that, rather than having kids feel discouraged.
Okay, so one of the things that we have done that's a little bit different is we're working more and more with a focus on students being responsible for their own learning. And it started with sixth grade, moved down to fifth grade, and we've made a commitment among the staff that by spring, all of the classes will have a student invited, and hopefully participating in that conference, and really owning what they've learned and explaining that to their parent. Some of the things that can be involved in this is just helping kids know how to reflect on their own learning, set goals, and a lot of that has to do with self-regulation, learning how to be responsible for having strong emotions. I teach in several of the classrooms a Second Step program, which is a program that's focused on teaching social skills, being, and control your impulses, it's also like anti-violence, anti-bolting program. And a lot of the classes are doing journaling, again, having students really reflect and be thoughtful about what they know, and that can even do, even with sending messages to staff members, and then exit tickets, which you've probably heard that, which is a daily.
I'm going to talk about that, I'm going to talk about exit tickets.
I'm not going to talk about it, but, so that'll be key.
One thing that I've seen in upper grades is teachers might have a five-minute quiet time where students can write them an email, just about anything that they want the teacher to know. That's kind of a more anonymous way than approaching an adult physically. There's, I wish my teacher new boxes, many ways to reflect and pass on information, rather than having to be, feel like it's a confrontation or...
I guess I just will add one thing, that the first time I went into one of the sixth grade student-led conferences, I was really blown away, as well as the parent, and it was really interesting that the teacher just kind of sat back, and most of it was on a computer, and the student just started talking, she was so poised, so self-confident, and...
She was so poised, so self-confident, and when her dad walked out, he was pretty amazed at what she had done and what she had put together and really was able to show what she knows.
So we want kids to own their academics. We also want them to own their behavior. And you learned a little bit about upstairs brain, downstairs brain before. Uh, part of that is knowing when a break is needed and taking it respectfully. Every classroom has some sort of a peace table or a break station where students can self-initiate a break rather than disrupting the class and needing to leave. So that would be what we would call a tier one intervention. It's class-wide, everybody has access to it whenever they need it. Class-wide, we work on strategies to reset ourselves and recon-con. We also integrate movement breaks. There's a really great website called Go Noodle. I encourage you to check it out if you have time, um, if you have kids, you've probably seen it at home.
Yes, many hours have been devoted.
There's all, there's a big range from brainteasers and crossing the midline activities to really revving up to guided meditation almost. So, um, those are highly utilized throughout our school. And we also have preventative, preventative behavior components in our school. We have our step program, which would be a tier three program. It's very individualized for students. They all have a behavior plan, they have check-ins with staff members. It's highly reinforcing and motivating for them. As a tier two, we have a planning room. Students can go there if they would like a quiet space to work. They could go there if they need to check in emotionally. Shelley Double Day runs our planning room. She has a really solid relationship with a lot of kids. And sometimes all they need is five minutes of Shelley time and they're ready to go back to class. Sometimes teachers go in for Shelley time. And relationships are the tier one interventions. Relationships with all of our staff in our building, um, really make the difference, I believe, for our kids.
So, um, some of the other things that we are thinking about in terms of motivation, having kids be responsible for their own learning and feel good about themselves and their learning, are things like cheerleaders that we've had related to S-Back, county fair day, All Schools Sing skits where different classes come up and get to showcase something they've been working on, maybe a poem that they've learned or some kind of a project. In terms of staff-led student activities, we have a revivorate student senate that's going on now, which again is one of those things that can make a student really feel good about themselves. That's an after-school activity. Terms of student attendance, which is really critical, there's also been research that shows that if kids have an after-school activity that they're really excited about, that can have an impact on where they come to school. Leadership team, which I work with, is also a piece where kids can develop their skills as leaders. Part of how I look at it is kind of planting seeds because I wanna develop leadership skills and send these guys on to BAMS where they can continue to be part of the leadership program and then on to the high school. Educational support team, one of the things I wanna say about that, we've had that for years, it's a really finely honed mechanism where we can look specifically at different academic interventions and supports that students need. But we're also looking more and more at what do they need emotionally? And one of the things that we've come up with is, is there someone in the building who can be a special advocate or connect with this person? And that's why when you look down there at the bottom, we say like custodial staff, because Ricky is actually a really great guy to connect with some of our kids, and we know that that really helps. So if there's some adult that we can match to give a little extra attention, that can make a big difference in a student's life. So again, looking at all the facets of the child, all the things that we need to put together to have that student really succeed.
I think also the environment that those non-classroom staff members help create in our school have such an impact that often goes unnoticed or un, uh, we don't talk about it a lot, but when they come into the building in the morning, it's clean, it's beautiful, they're welcomed. Our custodial staff does a great job keeping our building really nice. The cafe services, they're really accommodating with meals. We have breakfast after the bell rings in the office. Ally, who's our cafe services representative, is making special snacks all the time that are super healthy for kids, um, attendance awards. And we've got, you know, Jody Judith, we've got Gloria Macy from HRS. They're all so heavily involved in these kids' lives that we have kind of this beautiful intertwining of just a wraparound for kids. And the last piece of that EST that I, um, we've sort of just started using, but we felt like it would be important to show you, is called the circle of courage. And what it is, is a way to look at the whole child and all the components that we need to put in place to help them succeed in our school. So not only are we picking apart their academic skills, their needs, their strengths, but we're looking at, do they feel like they belong? Do they feel lonely at recess? Do they, uh, have a certain level of independence in one setting, but in other settings, they're glued to a peer? Things like that come out when we use things like this. We find we kind of can have more powerful conversations, and as our teacher leaders brought up, the more brains we put on something, the better the outcome. So when we all combine our brains with something like this, we can really service all of our students.
Now, I was thinking about the independence piece, that's really critical because it's not just teaching them to be independent as academic learners, but it's also with human beings. In terms of social skills, how they interact, how they handle their emotions, if they get angry, what do they do? So the goal is always for the student to be independent, both in handling their behavior and owning their own learning and being proud of it. And even in terms of something like the test, it's not just a question of what the score is, but are they comfortable going into a test and knowing that this is a time for them just to persist, try their best, and that they're gonna be tested throughout their life? That's part of going on to get a school job. People are gonna have to take tests. So if we can make them comfortable with that process, that's a gift. Any questions? Yes?
Does this go to all of each adult that, or that interacts or knows, knows each kid, each student? So like there may be three or four people putting information onto the wall?
That's a good question. Again, we're just starting to use it, but when we have educational support team, there might be the classroom teacher, there might be academic support teacher.
Special educator.
Special educator, counseling staff, principal, vice principal, so a lot of us in the room looking at this together.
That's not something that goes around to everybody that works with students.
No.
We have meeting notes, David, that are shared with people like that, but, um, and if they wanted to, they could, this'll be in their kid's file, so they could look, but, yeah. We try to keep that level of confidentiality to.
And speaking of testing, the next group is.
Formative assessment. This is like my favorite thing to talk about. I'll go quick now, okay? So formative assessment. So we don't have a picture into kids' brains or to be able to like look and see what kids are thinking as much as we'd like to. So we use this thing called formative assessment, which is really my favorite. Um, so formative assessment, what is it? Um, when you use formative assessment, all you're doing is gathering information before or after instruction, so you know if the students met the learning objective for that particular lesson. So, um, whereas there's also something called summative assessment, and that's like what the S-Back is. So this is not about the S-Back, this is about formative assessment. Um, so, uh, formative assessment, what it looks like if you were to see something in literacy. There's three really important components to formative assessment to be able to use it, um, correctly. So one is that you're giving kids a very specific target before the lesson begins so that they know what they're supposed to be learning and what they're moving towards. So at the beginning of the lesson, I have it posted, and I say something like, this would be in literacy, they're gonna use evidence from a text to support specific claims. So they know that's what they're looking for, and I give them the claim beforehand, if that makes, yeah, so that makes sense. So the claim that they had to do for this one was, um, they had to provide specific evidence on this character from the book Samuel is a Fighter. So as we read, they jotted down information, and they had to provide three pieces of evidence, um, to that statement. And you can see the top student did not meet that criteria. So this was a full-class, um, lesson. The top student did not meet that target whatsoever, and the bottom student did an excellent job. They cited evidence, they, um, included page numbers. So this let me know that the bottom student, they were ready to move on, they had gotten that target, we can continue to work and move forward. Whereas the student before that, I'm gonna need to do some intervention work with. If we look at it in math, am I supposed to push it? Oh, there we go. If we look at it in math, um, the student was supposed to divide decimals using place-value understanding, this is, um, also full-class instruction. And so, um, they were able to do that, and, um, I could clearly see that based on the work that I gave them. The whole lesson was about that. I told them that's what we were gonna be doing during the lesson. Afterwards, I was able to see if they met that target or not. So it's a super important part of daily instruction. As you can imagine, knowing if 19 kids understood the lesson is pretty hard if they're not giving you something. So when you give them daily, uh, formative instruction, you're able to pinpoint, this student met the target, this student did not meet the target, so what am I gonna do with that information? It's been shown consistently through all sorts of studies. The founding study was this, not founding, but one of the first big studies was this study called Inside the Black Box. It's great, you should read it, by Dylan and Black, I think are the last names, hence the black box. But it shows if you use formative assessment correctly, consistently, and, um, with specific targets in mind, that it will increase student performance. So it guides your instruction to meet the varied needs of students. It's one of the most important things. I did my action research on it when I was, um, in grad school. And if you know about, um, doing studies like this, it's very hard to get an effect size with a very small sample. And I had a very small sample, it was my class that I compared with another class, um, with similar demographics. And my class showed a huge effect size by using formative assessment and, um, specific feedback with students. So it's really, really important, and it pinpoints exactly who is gonna need enrichment and who's gonna need intervention and who's just ready to kind of stay the course. So it works for all levels of learners, and it's just very, very, um, indicative of how your students are doing. So moving forward with formative assessment, uh, like seven years ago, and I'm not sure if that's an accurate number, but, um, we did a formative assessment training as a staff. So the whole staff did a lot of work on formative assessment and how to provide feedback for students so that you're really able to make the most of their learning. And as Andy talked about, we've had huge staff turnover in that amount of time. So when we did the, um, work with it, uh, like the professional development, staff started to use it consistently, and they had targets consistently in place, and exit questions consistently in place. And as staff is turned over, we've, we need to redo that training so that we're doing that again consistently. So new, uh, teachers have to be trained, and we have to ensure that all teachers are implementing it consistently on a daily basis. That's all. I just realized, I've taught three-fifth of the kids' school board.
You always had great notes on those, on those books.
Yeah, I love writing. Do you guys have any questions?
So, T, one point that you made that I think is really, sorry, Jean Schultz. On the exit ticket, this is a place where we really have to move forward because it's not, it's not enough to say, "I gave an exit ticket to my kids." Boom, great, yay, whole other day. That's so crucial that, to take that work and then look at that work and determine where, how many kids got it, so you can plan for your next time. If you're just doing the exit tickets and throwing them in a bucket and you're not seeing who's moving forward, then you might as well not be doing it. So to me, this is a key, like dance and jump and do everything you need to do up there, T, because that's a big place where we need to move forward and be consistently doing it.
First, I just started, uh, so this is my 11th year, we both started, and the first few years, we didn't really know about formative assessment, we weren't using it. And we talk now about like, how did we know what the kids knew? Like, how did we know what to teach the next day? And it really, it really does help inform instruction and to know what to do to help students.
T, I think just one other thing to add to that is that you do it intuitively, is the cycle of feedback that is, exists within that routine.
Yeah.
Like kids are getting daily feedback on whether they did know what, whether they thought they knew, whether they did know, whether they didn't know.
Yeah, very specific, very specific feedback.
Or, um, honey pancake. Or they're getting daily instruction. So I know, I was in Kate's room, and, um, she looked at her exit tickets, and she split the kids up into three groups. The kids who were ready to move on were on front row, which is a math program, and then, um, the kids who, there were two different groups who needed specific instruction on specific things, and they were able to get that, um, during tier two time.
It's great.
Thank you, T. So I know we've gone, we've gone over, I apologize, but I just wanna thank the board for all your support to helping us make these things possible. And I, I hope that, that, uh, tonight's presentation gave you some insight into the complexity of our schools, just how complex, uh, work with children, teaching children is today.
Thank you to.
There are people to do it.
Yeah, thank you to all the teachers for coming out tonight, but also for all of your work with these kids because, you know, it's sometimes a thankless job, but you all do such a fabulous job.
Thanks.
Tell all your friends you're gonna be on TV.
Alright, so we have 29 minutes, and the supervisory union is scheduled to start. We're there, our meeting for that. Yeah, six thirty. So we still have a few minutes that we can do the rest of our agenda. I do wanna return, oh, Andy's on his way out the door, where'd he go? I do wanna return though, David, you were saying that we'd spent all that time on the S-Back, but I had two thoughts on that that I don't wanna forget. One is that the S-Back's required by law, so, I mean, we're always going.
Taking it is, yeah.
Right, so I think that to say that we don't wanna ever look at the results would be not correct as a school board to ignore something that's required by law. But, um, you said that we spent so much time on it. I don't feel like our discussion was at all on the S-Back scores in and of themselves as much as the discussion that's really, um, key and falls in what we've been discussing for the whole time I've been on the board of what goes on in our schools and the population that we have in our schools. And Andy's analysis of how many kids are actually, um, moving in and out is really another step that we hadn't thought of because we are watching in our monthly reports that you all give us, like how many kids go out, how many kids come in, but it's not how many kids, I was looking at that more in a cumulative number, but that's not really what it is. It's the movement entirely of kids coming in and out. So that was really helpful for me, Andy, to have that, um, part.
Yeah, kids who've never taken that test before, suddenly thrown into something new and.
And kids we didn't have, Kid Three.
Right, yeah.
Without the interventions perhaps that we do here.
Taking, yes.
My question, Andy, how much of the bridge construction do you think affected the, the moving of in and out of so many students? Do you anticipate as many kids moving out this coming year and in and out? I mean, that bridge construction was two years.
Oh, Bridge on Ninety-One.
Yeah, and that was a lot of families coming in and out at different times.
We can say a correlation, we did have, uh, a handful of students whose parents worked on the project.
Yeah.
Who enrolled in our school. I think we had four students, um, who were here for, here while their parent worked on the bridge, and then they moved to, um, I believe that company sent those workers to Louisiana. So that was minimal.
Yeah, the other schools, you didn't have.
No, no, not because of the, no, not for us.
And the other thing that we're tracking all the time is where they go to, and, you know, it's, I guess I haven't analyzed it, but I don't see that the kids are necessarily always just moving within, I mean, it's everywhere. Sometimes there's kids in Florida, and the next time there's one that goes to Demerstoun, and it, it's, there doesn't seem to be a consistent theme there to me anyway. Maybe I'm not seeing it.
It's, it's all over. You know, it's, um, right now, I think this is a reflection of our community. You know, I think in Demerstoun, for example, that, that the triney is very low. In Vernon, it's significantly low. But, um, the triney rate is, um, is greater in communities where there's a lot of rental, a lot of poverty and a lot of rentals, and so there's less single-family homes. And a number of years ago, you may recall, Dave, you may have this, when the percentage of single-family homes was, uh, reached less than 50%. In Brownborough, it was probably six years ago. So all those, all those seem to be factors. So all those, all those seem to be factors that increase tringency.
Any other comments from anybody before we go on to the rest of our board meeting? Okay, so let's look, thank you, Andy, for all of that, and Kelly. I'm going to kind of pick and choose, go quickly, hey? Policy council, David, have you met since we last met?
Uh, not since last meeting.
And energy committee?
Hasn't met, but I have contacted some parents and I've got two nibbles for people that would join us to look at the, we've got an audit of Oak Grove for a pretty complete upgrade. And a few years ago, when we looked at, we started looking at the pellet boiler, we had some engineers come through this building and they were looking at ways to close the envelope as well as putting the boiler system. And I don't think we have any documents for that, but we could certainly ask somebody to come through and give us a sense of what it costs for window quilts. So I'll try and set up a meeting this week and hopefully find some time and friends available and sit down with these parents and kind of go over what do I want to try and do.
So then the next thing on here is Act 46, Alternative Government Subcommittee. If it's okay with everybody, we also have Act 46 under unfinished business. Can we do the two of them together?
As far as that goes, yeah.
All right. And then finance, Kim, we got anything or we're going to have an SU meeting?
Right, well, all of the budget should have gone out to everybody on Monday. I know Barb sent it out, so everybody should have received a copy of it. And we've just been doing budgets.
Diversity, have anything you haven't met since last meeting?
We did, we had an extra meeting on the 29th with Peter Elwell, just to talk a little bit more about how the town can support the diversity day event and...
The women?
Yes. So most of that conversation was about like figuring out the venue and money. That was still kind of up in the air. And they also did a little bit of planning on what resources that the committee can give to all the schools that are going to participate in it to help them kind of dive deep into the theme, which is solidarity. So they're planning on having some, an article and book suggestions for teachers along with some, a brochure that has like project ideas and discussion ideas on it. And maybe some targeted activities that could be more like a K through two type thing, three through six. And since this is like a K through 12 project, we don't want to just tell everybody it's a generic idea.
So the next thing on here would be administrative reports. So I think we've probably heard from Academy already. Jerry is not here, Deb is not here. Mark, is anything we need to hear that you would like to do? And before you start in, Mark, Andy, Kelly, did you guys have, remember we said a couple of meetings ago, did you want to continue to always be on every agenda? Or since we meet twice a month, did you want to only be on one agenda a month? We asked you to think about that and come back to it.
We actually haven't discussed it as a group yet.
All right, so we'll have that question. Let me just make a note so we don't forget. I'm stealing your pen as well as your agenda. All right, go ahead, Mark.
Okay. Jerry had to leave for a band concert, but she has her report right here. Cycle that around. So I'll go, I know we're really tight on time, so I'll go quick. As you get the report, on the first page, just noted that there, we actually did not make any DCF reports during the month of November. And as I was reviewing that, it felt odd because we're talking with DCF all the time. So made a note there that we're basically in daily communications between our health office, school counselor, and DCF, social workers regarding current foster plans and actively open DCF cases. On the second page, just a couple of things going on. In November, we had a formal training for our, we have 15 students getting trained in restorative justice practices. And that's a leadership group in the school who helps facilitate a really active restorative justice program. So we did that training over at BUHS, we're going to use the building. Couple of upcoming events. We have our winter band concert on December 13th. That'll start at 6:00 PM in our gymnasium. Couple of performances coming to the school. We have a nutcracker performance, December 18th at 9:00 AM. That's being performed by Wyndham Regional Career Center students and in collaboration with the Bratboro School of Dance. And then our student senate is actively working on the Project Feed the Thousands initiative. So over the course of next week, they'll be, you'll be hearing them on the radio a little bit. On the 15th, they'll be at the Hannaford Grocery Store helping to fill the bus. And then just a couple of comments. I thought that teachers did a great job tonight with their presentation. And one of the things that they talked about was trauma-informed schools and resiliency. And that's also a major focus for us this year. So coming up on December 12th, we're going to be watching a movie called Resilience. It's about an hour-long movie. We're going to watch it as a staff with a pair of educators, special staff. It's about an hour-long presentation and then we'll have some time for reflection afterward in small groups. But it's a major topic, a major point of, major initiative that we're also focusing on and that we have to, based on the challenges that we have. So it was really nice to see that in the presentation and see a lot of, you know, commonalities of things that we're targeting because they're needed. And I reported earlier in the year, we're also actively working with a woman named Joelle Van Lent, who is a leading trauma-informed school psychologist up in Burlington. So we have a conference call with her on January 4th. And then she'll be coming to a school site visit on April 11th. So be reporting on that theme throughout the school year as well.
Just a couple of follow-ups for that, right away. Mark, talk about Project Feed the Thousands and I want to recognize that WTSA was recognized statewide by the Vermont Broadcasters Association for their Project Feed the Thousands community effort over the years. So all of our schools take part in that, so that was good. And also, we've talked a couple of times tonight about ACES and just to let you know that Tracy Benet, parent, the counselor at Green Street School, will be working with all the administrators in January, doing some training around.
And one of the initiatives that we started last year, which I included in the packet as an add-on, is a description of our therapy dog program that Tracy brought to the school last year.
How often does that happen?
Once a week.
Okay, so folks, we are at 6:13. Wondering, Frank, if you could do a budget presentation that takes 10 minutes?
Sure, yeah, this is intended just to be sort of a handout and a very brief overview with, next meeting, you know, we get into more detail review of questions. And I also have a preliminary capital plan as well. So I'll hand out two documents. One is a little thicker than the other, so if you would take, take one of each. There's the beginning of the capital plan and here is the draft, both are draft documents.
While we're waiting for that to come around, then folks, the other items on here, the only other item is the Act 46 and the Alternative Governance Committee. So if we do the budget for about 10 minutes, we have five minutes for alternative governance. And...
All right. So this is the fiscal year, fiscal year 19 budget proposal draft. And so of course it begins July of next year, runs through June of 2019. That's why we call it fiscal year 19. Quick highlights, when we go to the last page, page 28, far right-hand column is our standard format for this, this phase of our budget review, you see a 3.13% increase, $455,000 over our current budget of $14,547.
Does that include the SU portion?
It does. The finance committee of the SU has met several times and they have approved the recommendation for the meeting a little later this evening to the full supervisory union board. And the special ed assessment is down for Bratboro Town and it's, the administrative assessment is also down. So those, those two elements of this budget do not contribute to the increase.
Does it have a solid level of confidence in the health insurance, some years that's...
Yes, yes. So this does reflect the negotiated agreement. And VHI has given us a estimated premium change that would be effective January of 2019, so it would only have a half a year effect on this budget. Keep in mind, premiums have dropped about 30% on average from fiscal year 17 to the rates that we're projecting for the first half of fiscal year 19. So down 30%. And now they're saying, too early to tell what claims will look like against this self-insured pool, but they want to raise the gold CDHP rate by 10%. So that, you know, for six months is only a 5% impact to our budget and in terms of just healthcare. So I have integrated that into this. Overall, overall, this budget, if you isolated all healthcare costs, they're down a little bit from the current year. So on a $14,547 is our current, so a baseline, you know, 1% is about $150,000. And $450,000 increase over 3%, you know, is about three of those. So if I gave you another, just a couple of, couple of quick highlights on the single larger increases that are putting that upward pressure, of course, the usual negotiated agreement salary changes averaged about 2%. But for new requests in this budget proposal, we have probably the single largest is in the capital area. So I didn't intend to go over the capital plan in detail, but I actually haven't changed fiscal year 19 for Academy. We had published the same capital plan last year for fiscal year 19, you know, 2021. And remember, we had proposed $50,000 for window retrofits based on the thermal properties problem, problematic properties of this building. And $640,000 for the pre-K structure, which would replace the mobile, the temporary mobile structure that's out here. So that would be actually an addition, you know, a renovation in addition. And again, we discussed this last year, nothing new there, but that does create upward pressure. The net effect, when you look at fiscal year 18 versus fiscal year 19 long-term capital plan, is only an increase of $90,000 because, remember, we had, we had a $646,000 contribution to Green Street's capital project that is happening now and going well. So it's not a $640,000 increase, but it is a $90,000 increase. And that is, that is one of the significant, you know, not what I would say reoccurring expense. That combined with a debt service on Green Street project, remember, we had authorization to borrow $350,000. At this point, we haven't borrowed anything. We'll wait until we actually pay all the bills and we'll determine to what extent is there a variance against the project budget and hopefully we can borrow less. But this does include $36,000 of new money in the event we do borrow $350,000 over 10 years. The third increase, so capital, debt on the new system, and then the third is, we have had a request from Mark for a social worker position, much like what we have in the Academy budget. That would show up in the district-wide section of this proposal. And I'm sure we'll want to talk about that more maybe when we have a little more time. But those are the three sort of new money requests that are in this that take us above what would otherwise be more of a 1% to 2%.
So how many new staff is there in the budget?
New staff is really just the social worker.
One position for Green Street?
Yes, basically. Jerry does have a request to expand the clinician that we have as a contracted service through HCRS. I believe that's a somewhat of a similar role, but not exactly. So it's not employment, but it is part of our costs.
Just briefly, my thought on that position was that it would be a position housed at Green Street and I would supervise, but with the flexibility work with any family in Brat Town. So it could be working with families from Oak Grove or even Academy. And it's amazing how many dynamics we have where families from Green and families from Academy are so interly woven and related.
So that's why that is listed under district-wide.
Yeah. And I should add, one other thing that I did just review with a few folks, and I think the net effect is, is an increase is in, oh yes, I had forgotten, in pre-K. Jerry had asked for an increase in pre-K, a half-time position to support the new program that's just gotten established. And we also have quite a variability. You'll see, pre-K is in our very last page of the document because the, remember, we organize this by school and then by program. Pre-K, we've kind of isolated as its own school because of the state requirements around how we report information. And you can see on page 28, pre-K in total is up $54,000. That reflects that half-time new position. But you also see quite a bit of variability in the private access to pre-K. So those are, you see some large numbers there. The budget of $408,000 is proposed for the private access. That's the Act 166 requirement that's new to us. That's up by, from $315,000 up $93,000, but then we had a sort of a similar offset, the number right above that, EES's numbers dropped. So it's sort of, sort of evened that impact out. But that's the other reason.
Okay, so folks, we have one minute left of what we said we were going to do for this.
One question, Frank, are you, we obviously don't have the revenues. Are you planning on using any of the reserve to offset taxes?
Yeah, so not until we get our equalized student data from the state would I be able to say, here's what a prudent move is going forward.
When is that not supposed to come?
It's required by law by December 15th. We don't have any data as of today, but I hope to have at least preliminary data by next week.
So any feedback we want to give to... So any feedback we want to give to at this point? Are we comfortable with this or we're not worried until we see equalized numbers or anything, anything else to say?
Too much flux at this point.
Yeah, I think we need to see the equalized students.
I agree with them.
All right, so then, thank you, Frank. And I'm sure Jerry will speak more to the position at the pre-K that she wants to talk about too. So the only other item left on our agenda is Act 46 and the Alternative Governance. Dave and Kim?
Let me just do a quick update because obviously there's not much time. The committee meets again tomorrow night. The intention is to get a proposal as much as possible. There are a lot of, there's a lot of data yet to be gathered and a lot of background information, but basically the core of the proposal to have it pretty solidly written up and available to everybody on the 13th. So we've got a whole week to review it and think about it before our meeting on the 20th. I sent around a sort of synopsis of the heart of the proposal and I printed out copies too in case people are reading off their computers. And this is really the core of it. And I think if you, if you're familiar with this and focus your questions on this, you can kind of skim the other things that come along.
And just so we, everybody's aware, because we received the response back via email, we haven't had a meeting, our request for the extension was denied. So I just wanted that to go up, to be in the minutes and for the TV, so that way everybody knows.
Yeah, Lyle was absolutely right. It's a law and it's always--
So as of, I also have something to pass out here for everybody on the board. It's a letter that the boards and Putney and Guilford will also be considering. And this would be, this would also be the, just so we have everything on the table, this would be a letter we could send should we decide to go the other way and stick with the articles of agreement that were written by the study committee. And so we can read this, I guess, at your leisure as well, but similar, it could be the same letter coming from the other boards, but they'd have to review it and make their minds up as well.
This is Putney and Guilford that's--
Putney and Guilford, yes. So I want it to be out there because we need to have everything so we can consider it before our vote next week on, sorry, next meeting, which is December 20th. And at the end of that meeting, we have to send something up to the state. I want to look quickly at our work plan for next meeting and then we need to stop because the rest of the supervisory union is sitting here wondering when we're going to be quiet so they can get in. So you can tell what, you know--
Yes, so part of our agenda next, on the 20th, not next week, on the 20th is Kari Smith will be here doing gender-affirming training with us. Kari's done this training at a couple of schools in WSCSU. So she will be here. I would like it if she could start at the start of our meeting so that she can do the training and then she can leave and we can move on to--
How long is she going to speak?
She knows that she has at most, including questions from you, 90 minutes.
Okay, so we have a two-hour meeting that'll give us a half an hour for everything else that we need to do. And we need to make a decision on Act 46 in the same time.
Are we also going over the budget?
Are we going over the budget again next meeting?
If you'd like, what date was that?
The 20th.
Yeah, if you'd like, we can. I certainly would have equalized students. I could give you a projected tax rate and, you know, address any other questions you might have.
I mean, maybe we should be aware that we're going to be going over two hours.
Yeah, that's disgusting.
I think we need to.
There's no way we can do, I don't think we need administrative reports again next time, would be my thought.
But I don't think--
And not when we have committee reports either.
I think we just, the three topics--
Yeah, even if we don't have any other reports, I think we'll have--
Unless there's an emergency that we need to address with one of the schools.
Okay, then, so I'll take, for the agenda next time, we're just going to leave it as it is, which is Gender Affirming Communities Budget and--
Act 46.
Act 46. And if the administrators came up with their answer on whether you want to present each time or not, take a motion to adjourn. So moved--
Second in.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Bye.
Bye.